This meeting of the Nashville City Council will now come to order and the Chair calls over the City Clerk, Ivan Nelson, for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Councilman Williams is in the building, I'm sure he'll join us shortly. Councilman Avery is absent today. Councilman Eccles?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Harris to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity for the citizens of Gadsden and the officials to come together to transact business and we hope that it is business that is pleasing to you. We hope that you will continue to guide us, lead us, and be with us. Bless the officials, bless the United States of America, bless our persons who are in charge of making decisions for this country and give them the wisdom to make wise decisions that are beneficial to you and to us. Be with us as we go through this process and we'll continue to give you all the praise and all the glory. These blessings we ask in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Finance Committee meeting, work session, and a City Council meeting on April 23rd.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of April 19th through the 25th.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, Mayor. Got a hand full.
Can I ask Stacy Gorman, come up please? Have a proclamation?
I guess I better turn that on, have it silent. Whereas music plays an increasingly important role in our world today, music is one of the most sublime human pursuits and is subscribed by all races and creeds. Music is the language of all peoples and one of the greatest forces in creating peace and harmony. The National Federation of Music Clubs, dedicated to encouraging young musicians to increase musical knowledge and to advancing American music, and its cooperating organizations, join forces to direct attention to the dynamic influence of music in everyday living. Whereas the National Music Week theme for 2013 is "Music, the Colors of Life." Therefore, I, Sherman Gotten, Mayor of the City of Gadsden, by the virtue of authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim May 5th through the 12th, 2013, as National Music Week in the City of Gadsden, and ask all citizens of this community to observe and take part in activities that recognize the importance of music, musicians, musical organizations, and the cultural life of our city, state, nation, and world.
First of all, I want to thank the City of Gadsden for all they have done in promoting music in our community. It is very important to the children and to the teenagers and to the young adults and to the old adults and all of us to realize how much music plays a part in our life and to support that in all the various musical endeavors. And I thank you for your continual support of music in our schools and music in our community. From the Gadsden Music Club and from me.
I'll tell you a little side note, when the, excuse me, when the Youth Orchestra and the Downtown Dance Conservatory went to New York a couple of years ago, they performed at John J. College, I think that's Criminal Justice College there in New York City. I actually saw it on TV one night on NYPD. But anyway, what, the people local who filled up the auditorium, it was just, I don't know, maybe 50 parents there from here, and the rest were all local people who bought tickets. And the Youth Orchestra was down in the pit, you couldn't see them. And when it was over, of course, they started, they brought, you know, they came up, took a bound on, when I was leaving, I heard several people saying, "Oh, that was a bunch of kids. I thought that was like adults playing." So it was really good, it was really good. Thank you. Betty Willoughby, from the Mental Health of America Edouard, Executive Director, and Tom Brookshire.
Hey.
Hey.
How are you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives. Promotion and prevention are effective ways to reduce the burden of mental health conditions. There is a strong body of research that supports user-friendly tools that all Americans can access to better handle challenges and protect their health and well-being. Mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation. With effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. Each business school, government agency, faith-based organization, health care provider, and citizen has a responsibility to promote mental illness, mental wellness, and support prevention efforts. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Sherman Gotten, the Mayor of the City of Gadsden, do hereby proclaim May 2013 as Mental Health Month, and call upon all citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, schools in the City of Gadsden and Alabama to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health. One of the councilmen asked me, could the council and myself get some counseling for mental health? Matthew Schroeder, State Director of Dixie Abate. Whereas motorcycles are increasingly used as a regular means of transportation, and the motorcycle is an energy-efficient vehicle that reduces fuel consumption, traffic, and parking congestion. The motorcycle is an important form of transportation for commuting, touring, and recreation. As a matter of safety, it is necessary to develop appropriate driving habits to handle these vehicles on the roadways. Over the past 10 years, motorcycle fatalities have increased 150% as reported in the United States Department of Transportation's Fatality Analysis Report. To prevent injuries and deaths on the roadways, motorcyclists and motorists must be diligent in their efforts to share the road and ensure the safety of everyone. Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month raises public awareness for a lifetime of safe motorcycle riding. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Sherman Gotten, the Mayor of the City of Gadsden, do hereby proclaim May as Motorcycle Awareness Month in the City of Gadsden, and ask all citizens to pay attention to motorcycles.
I'd like to thank the Mayor and the City for declaring May Motorcycle Awareness Month. They've had that in the past and I thank you for your continued support. Thank you.
Okay, we have some special guests with us today from Gadsden City High School. They're former, they're gonna be movie stars, I understand, one of these days. David Boesman, would you introduce them, please?
Absolutely.
Any else you want to introduce?
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you so much for having us here today. My name is Jason Boesman. I'm an English and theater teacher at Gadsden City High School at Gadsden, Alabama. Of course, here, home. Today, I've brought cast members from our spring musical, You're a Good Man, Charlie Brown, composed of ninth through 12th grade students. I want to say that these students here represent not only some of our most talented performances, but also give us some of the best of our academic and involvement, as the arts tend to do in schools. We get so much of our student council members, we get so much of our club members, we get a great deal of the involvement that goes on at Gadsden City comes straight from the arts. And not only that, but I think the GPA of this group would be a really high one as well. So I'm really excited to have them here to perform. We have our school musical coming up this weekend, Friday, Saturday night at 7:00 and Sunday at 2:00 at the Gadsden City High School Auditorium. I want to introduce the students as they, as they're performing. Jacob Lett, who will be playing the role of Charlie Brown. Katie Stalkup will be playing the role of Snoopy. Patricia Kizon as Lucy. Kelsey Cordell as Sally Brown. Andrew Panic as Linus. Jeremiah Sims as Schroeder. Brittany Yow as Woodstock. Addison Rains playing Frida. Draven Jackson is Peppermint Patty. Mary Lackey is Marcy. Austin Claire Pritchett will be playing the teacher, Miss Offmore, and she will have the most recognizable lines in the entire play. Anna Claire Lett playing Violet and Jade Oliver playing Molly Volly. And I think it's a fantastic coincidence that we are here to perform for you today on a day where you declare the Music Week in the City of Gadsden, because these youngsters are some of the most, not only great performers, but you should hear some of them play piano, play instruments in the band, they are musicians through and through. And to me, our accompanist, Lana Cornutt, also one of the music directors, along with Gina Garman, teach these students music that also adds to how they perform in math, also adds to how they perform all throughout the classroom. The arts need to be married to education. And Gadsden City Schools and the City of Gadsden, thank you for continuing your support of that throughout our system, which makes us the best system in the state of Alabama. So without further ado, I would like you to, I'd like to introduce the cast to perform four songs for you today from You're a Good Man, Charlie Brown.
Some days I wake up early in the morning just to watch the sunrise. I think about how beautiful it is, how my life flies at the morning, and I get a very positive feeling about things. For instance, this morning, the sun's so bright and the sky's so clear, how could anything go wrong on a day like this? I'm late!
You're the kind of reminder we need. You have humility, nobility, and a sense of honor that is very rare indeed. You're a good man, Charlie Brown. And we know you will go very far. Yes, it's hard to believe, almost frightening to concede what a good man you are.
You are kind.
You are kind to all the animals and every little bird. With a heart of gold, you believe what you're told.
Every single solitary wolf.
You brave with face adversity, your cheerful through the day. Your thoughtful, brave, and courteous.
And if you haven't thought for the moment, let's just say that you're a good man, Charlie Brown. You're a prince, and a prince could be king. With a heart such as yours, you could open any doors. You could go out and do anything. You could be king, Charlie Brown. You could be king.
Your body says no.
You're a good man, Charlie Brown.
Every voice said, "Hurry."
You're a good man, Charlie Brown.
All I need is one more try. I'd rather get back to the floor than another kind of guy who gives up easily. I wonder why they start to say...
You're a good man, Charlie Brown.
Never wiped me out again.
You're a good man, Charlie Brown.
Trying not to rock the boat, I try to make a scene. A good man, yes, but I can't guess, I don't know. I want to rise like I should and do everything right, but I lie awake.
Never sleep with questions.
Loud and deep.
Oh, I want to take the leap, but the answer isn't clear. Can I be... Charlie Brown, Charlie Brown. You're a good man, Charlie Brown. You're a good man, Charlie Brown.
Get on the bus. Go ahead, get on the bus, Charlie Brown.
Don't want to be late for school.
That's right! Don't want to be late.
Don't want to be late for school.
You're a good man, Charlie Brown. You're the kind of reminder we need. You have humility, nobility, and a sense of honor that is very rare indeed. You're a good man, Charlie Brown. You're a prince, and a prince could be king. With a heart such as yours, you could open any doors. You could go out and do anything. You could be king, Charlie Brown. You could be king. You could be king. Believe it.
I'm in a life that prays by God.
And you were born for this far. You're a good man.
You know it.
You're a good man, Charlie Brown.
When you got nothing, stop.
You're a good man. You're a good man. You're a good man. You're a good man, Charlie Brown.
Hey, that was great. Next stop, New York Stage. I think you're ready.
I think the way you play the piano is nice. Do you know something else? It's always been my dream that I marry a man who plays the piano. Play something nice like April showers. I'm sure you can play something nice like April showers. For even prayer, I shout. Beethoven's nice, too. Just imagine what you'd think if something you and I should get married. What you'd like that if some day we should get married. My marriage, right? Never try to discuss marriage with a musician.
Oh, yeah, that's what you think. Oh, yeah? That's what you think. Oh, yeah, that's what you think. Oh, yeah, that's what you think!
What?
That's my new philosophy. Oh, yeah? That's what you think.
Well, why are you telling me?
What?
Why are you telling me?
Why are you telling me? I like it! That's a good philosophy. Why are you telling me? Why are you telling me? Why are you telling me? My new philosophy. The teachers gave a D on my sweet homework. She said, "Miss Sally Brown, your grades are going down. I could have taught her."
Your new philosophy?
My new philosophy. Miss B, I'm cheap, look, see? A D, a D. Why are you telling me? And that's my new philosophy.
That's your new philosophy?
Why are you telling me? My new philosophy.
That's great, Sally, but I've got to go practice my Chopin and B-flat minor.
No! What? No! That's a good philosophy? No! No! No!
That's your new philosophy, huh?
Yeah! No!
Just like the penny bee, each new philosophy can fly from tree to tree and keep me moving. When life's a dizzy maze on alternating days, I choose a different phrase.
Your new philosophy?
My new philosophy.
Sally, some philosophies are simple. Math does not live by bread alone. Some philosophies are clear.
Leave your message at the sound of the tone.
Some philosophies begin to choose, deciding what goes in.
Some take a lifetime.
Mine take a bit.
But Sally, anything that takes only a minute can't be very lasting. For instance, Beethoven took over two years to complete his brilliant Ninth Symphony.
No!
I can't stand it!
I can't stand it! I like it!
It's like a guarantee, my new philosophy. And things are sure to be a whole lot quieter.
Oh, yeah? That's what you think. Why are you telling me? No! I can't stand it!
Now, life is free and easy, much more philosophy-y with my brand new.
You know, someone has said that we should live each day as if it were the last day of our life. This is the last day? I only have 24 hours left of it! This is it! This is the last day! Ah! Clearly, some philosophies aren't for all people. That's my new philosophy!
Telling the heart. Happiness is burning to a soul, trying to push you for a better start. Happiness is growing in your heart. And happiness is holding on forever. Happiness is two kinds of ice. Now we can see. I can't see. Happiness is five different grades. Fireflies and a green. Happiness is leaning upon every cloud and air. And happiness is coming home again. Happiness is morning and evening, daytime and nighttime, too. Your happiness is anyone and anything at all that's love by you. Happiness, happiness is...
Sharing the same, sharing the goal.
Happiness is singing. Singing together when day is true. And happiness is those who sing. Happiness is those who sing with you. Morning and evening, daytime and nighttime, too. Your happiness is anyone and anything at all that's love by you.
You're a good man, Charlie Brown.
That was great, David.
Yes, it was.
We enjoyed it. You can bring them back anytime.
Anytime.
Mr. Boesman, is there any truth to the rumor that Charlie Brown's gonna be shaving his head to get more in character for this weekend?
Well, we're working on that. While he's asleep, I asked him whether his sister...
He said it's not happening. Charlie Brown says no.
That was good. That's gonna be real dope.
Very entertaining.
Okay, resolution, number eight is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 509 Reservoir Street in District Two. The State of Alabama, Tim and Brandy Campbell, Michelle and Mowgli, and Jean P. Sewell, being the last known owners. The resolution was table for seven days on April 23rd. What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we pass this resolution and abate the nuisance.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
It is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 200 Washington Street in District Two. John R. Armstrong and GMAC Mortgage LLC doing business as Diet Tech dot com being the last known owners. The resolution was also table for seven days. What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, with this one as well, I make a resolution that we pass this ordinance and abate the nuisance.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Number nine, this is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 1207 Hope Street in District Two. William Hatter, Thomas Hatter, Robert Hatter, being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Please come forward and state your name and address for the City Clerk.
William Hatter.
Address?
Appeal Box 2384, East Gadsden. 35903, Mission 0484.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, council members, I'm William Hatter. I'm one of the owners. I just want to tell you that I have been making improvements... I just want to tell you that I have been making improvements in spite of my 65 years of age and bad knees and injured shoulder and back, my car wrecked several years ago, but I have been making improvements. It may not look like it on the outside, but I have. Not quite ready to have the building department come back out and re-inspect it, but I'm working toward it and it should be ready soon. It's a good house, it's in good condition. There's really no reason to tear down a good house. It would create a severe financial hardship. Also, there's a man interested in buying the house from us. So, I ask the council to table this matter for 30 days, give us additional time. I know we've had time, but I ask that the council table the matter for 30 days and give us time. By then, we should be able to end it and no further action by the council should be required.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to it? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case in May of last year. There've been no improvements that we can see. There was a building permit taken out in May of last year. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to make a couple comments and then I'll make a motion. I've had the opportunity to speak with Mr. Hatter a number of times, actually back in May, petition the Building Department on his behalf regarding his desire to receive more time. I can't tell you how much I empathize with, and you try not to make these things personal and you try not to get too emotionally drawn in, but I can't tell you how much I empathize with his situation. I think it has a lot to do with his means and his ability to be able to carry out some of the needed repairs. And at this time, I want to extend myself just one additional time because, again, we've extended ourselves as a city for a year and there's been very little improvement to the property and we're getting a number of complaints from the community. But I will extend myself one additional time and I don't know if there's any precedent for this, but I'll ask, I'll make a motion that we table this item for seven days. But the stipulation that I have within that is that the Building Department needs to be able to go out and inspect the property to ensure that we're headed in the right direction. And going forward, we'll review this in seven-day increments to gauge the progress. And at the point that it's deemed that no progress is being made in terms of abating this nuisance, then it'll be my recommendation that we abate it. So my motion simply is that we table this for seven days.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for seven days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for seven days.
Ten is a resolution appointing and reappointing. This appoints Valerie Alford for a term expiring November the 1st, 2017, and reappoints James Turnbach and Ricky Hunter for terms expiring November the 1st, 2018. This is for the Gaz and Water Works and Sewer Board. Chairman Leonard Hay to motion to adopt this resolution. So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Eleven is a resolution authorizing agreement with Crescent Moon Entertainment. This is for the Journey Tribute Band Departure to perform at the amphitheater on June the 7th as part of the Summer Concert Series and the amount is $2,800. Chairman Leonard Hay to motion to adopt this resolution. So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Twelve is a resolution authorizing agreement with the Gaz and Times. This renews the annual book advertising agreement for classified ads at $2,500 level. The current rate for 2013 is $2.34 per line. Chairman Leonard Hay to motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business, is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a resolution. I would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today. It is a resolution approving special events alcoholic beverage license to the Chamber of Gaz and Edgeworth County for River Fest.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this will give the Chamber an area at River Fest for Friday, May 31st and Saturday, June 1st, and they have met all the requirements of the Code of Ordinances for the issuance of a license to sell alcoholic beverages in a section that's going to be secured at River Fest.
Any other? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business, is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have an item that I'd like to ask for consideration today. Unanimous consent to consider today is a resolution authorizing a tax abatement agreement with Intiva Products.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is a bit of good news in that Intiva Products LLC is asking that we pass this to assist them with a major addition to their existing facility. As I understand it, it's a $7 million expansion and they're looking to, I think, add 80 jobs over the next two years. It's a good move in the right direction for the city, I believe.
Any other? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other? Mr. President, I have one. It's a legal document, 2013-110. It's a resolution authorizing purchase of a four-wheel drive backhoe through the NJPA instead of the NEAPA bid, number 3233, for a two-wheel drive vehicle. We're trying to get a four-wheel drive instead of a two-wheel drive backhoe.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt, please.
Second.
Any discussion?
This is, like I just said, this is about $7,700 more. We need a four-wheel drive backhoe instead of a two-wheel drive. We had to get trees that's in ditches and stuff that's falling. We had this storm and this is probably about the only four-wheel drive backhoe we have right now, we purchased this one.
Johnny, I understand that, do I understand that we've already approved the purchase of the two-wheel and that we're going back and asking for an addition, $7,000 for the four-wheel?
$7,728 for a four-wheel, four-wheel drive.
Okay.
I mean, the two-wheel drive, what you get when you get a two-wheel drive, you can't pull the stuff out from the ditches and stuff. This four-wheel drive, you can pull it out from the ditches, it's, you know, stuff problems that we have.
Because we had already approved the purchase of the two-wheel drive.
That's correct. We're just going back and trying to get this four-wheel drive for $7,700 more.
Very good.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one. It's a resolution authorizing application and acceptance of a grant to purchase mattress sets for the fire stations. Ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today is new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is a $500 grant for mattresses that are well-needed at the fire station.
Any other?
We promised no. I want to say something, so.
How many will it sleep me?
Hold your own, Mr. Harris.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business? Department reports, committees, march by the mayor and the council. Mayor, you want to start?
Yeah, well, I just want to say, if you haven't noticed, a lot of the arts and music things at, excuse me, the Gaz and City High School and the Board of Education for all the schools, there's some strings programs. I've been to a couple elementary schools where they play the strings. It's amazing what a lot of people are doing, especially to the students. They say when you're in that program like that, there's better discipline and better grades and everything is much better when you're associated with that. We really have a lot of that going on and we want to keep supporting it like the council and the city has done so far. Also, on the grass cutting, we're in the process of putting a few signs up. I know people, some people have been calling. If you call, give us your address, your phone number, and be sure and leave it. We're getting a list up because we're going to try to unload a lot of these lots as soon as we get some things. So bear with us a little bit on the grass cutting. We will get it cut, I assure you. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition to that, Mayor, I visited over, during the holiday, during the Christmas holidays, went to several events at the, at three elementary schools and they have string, they have string quartets and they're playing string instruments and it's amazing to see the kids, you know, up to fifth grade, playing those instruments. So whenever they, whenever we have the opportunity, we will certainly support all of the musical activities that are going on in the city. We appreciate that. First Friday is this coming Friday, I, I told, we will plug, give a plug for that. Our first Friday is this coming Friday, so everybody come out and enjoy the festivities downtown this coming Friday. And the city council, I think, last week I made an announcement of the fact that Sixth Street Cemetery was attaining some status, you know, that, that, that we appreciate, that we're very proud of as a city. The official notification is going out to the city council, to the mayor, to the courthouse, to Bobby Jenkins, the pro-bi judge, and several other officials here in the city and in the county. And that, and that document states, the council member, this is the one that we have here. The state of Alabama Historical Commission is pleased to inform you that the above- referenced cemetery has been added to the Alabama Historic Cemetery Register. The Alabama Historic Cemetery Register is a prestigious listing of historic cemeteries in Alabama. The Alabama Historical Commission considers historic cemeteries particularly worthy of preservation and appreciation and therefore deserving of this special recognition. Listing in the register is an honorary designation. And it goes on to say, for your information, there are now four cemeteries in Edgeworth County listed in the Alabama Historic Cemetery Register, which features 579 cemeteries. And there are other, there's other information in this letter that gives you information, gives you the number that you can call the Historical Society if you have any questions concerning the commission, I'm sorry, concerning this event, but press releases are forthcoming. But this information is, it's not a secret, it's not a secret, there's no harm because this information is being sent to everybody in the city of Gaz and Edgeworth County. Just want to make you aware of it, that be looking forward to the press release and further activities, I'm sure that will be presented to us by Ms. Shari Bostick. Shari Bostick. She's the one basically responsible for us obtaining this designation. So I, again, I thank her for her endeavors in accomplishing this task. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, do want to recognize the young people earlier and do want to also recognize Mr. Bozeman as well for his role. We are very lucky to have Mr. Bozeman and he is, you know, again, one of the, I think, one of the rising stars and bright instructors and teachers that we have at Gaz and City Schools. One other item, and I just, this is more about information than anything else, but you know, I think sometime, some time ago, I'm not sure of the exact timing, but of course the, the city of Anderson was able to, through their local legislative delegation, was able to pass, or at least bring, to pass a bill that would allow them to bring to vote the issue of Sunday alcohol sales. And of course, currently, the city of Weaver is pursuing something similar. So, and you know, I don't want to present this council, or even myself, being in support at any level of Sunday alcohol sales, but I will tell you this, I think, I think it's something that's worthy of the opportunity for our citizens to have, have the chance to vote on it. And it has not been presented in terms of that opportunity because our local legislative delegation has not deemed it, has not presented the opportunity to, to do such a thing and do just that. So, you know, what does that mean and why am I bringing that up today? Well, again, I think it's an opportunity for our citizens to be informed, you know, the criticality of it speaks to our inability in many respects to compete commercially for some, for some restaurants as it relates to, as it relates to not having those, the opportunity to sell alcohol on Sunday. So, again, my opinion on that, and my opinion is no better than anyone else's, but I think it's, it's an opportunity and we're, we're one of the remaining, if not the remaining city of our size that has not considered this. It's, it's an opportunity for us to, one, present it to our citizens to, for a vote and give them the opportunity to say yea or nay, and I think that's where it's most important. Not a group of legislators, legislators, but the citizens should have the opportunity to say yea or nay as it relates to that. And secondly, it gives us the opportunity to compete. We talk often about economic development and growing this area and that's, the absence of Sunday alcohol sales has proved to be an impediment in many respects. So, again, please reach out to your local legislative delegation if you have strong opinions one way or the other about that issue because, again, it is up to them to raise it before it can be accurately considered.
I would like to echo the, how much I enjoyed our very talented young people from Gaz and High School. Sometimes we, we focus too much on the bad eggs that, as they come along and not push the positive things that our young people do. We have a great high school and a great bunch of people and I thoroughly enjoyed their program this morning. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last night, we had a meeting with the Alabama City Association on Wall Street. We're going to do some major improvements down there through some help with county commission and one of them's going to give us some money. We're going to do some upgrades down on Wall Street, so stay tuned for that. That's going to be happening probably in the next five or six months. There's one more meeting we're going to have before we put, finalize that project. Also, too, they talked about...
Also, too, they talked about another project they're going to do down on Wall Street, June the 15th. It'd be an all-day event. I'm not going to tell you what that is yet because I might be surprised, we're just going to build up to that right there. Let it be a surprise, but I think everybody will want to come out that day, June the 15th in Alabama City and see what's going on on Wall Street. Tonight, we will have a District Six meeting at Banks Park in South Gazzin, just for the South Gazzin residents. It'll start at 5:30. Have a representative from the police department to be there tonight. Brian Harbison from the Building Department to be there and Kerry Payne will be there also. Chief, I'm going to let the police department speak first and Brian, you can go second and that way Kerry can just talk all he wants to and we can leave after a couple hours, you know, because Kerry kind of gets wound up, you know. And then next Monday night at 5:30, we will have a District Six meeting at, A, at Community Center for the People in Alabama City in District Six. That's all I got.
Man. I don't even know how to defend Paul Kerry, though he really does talk too much sometimes. But I enjoy every word he says, I don't know. Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Ronnie Reed's with us this morning, another good read on the horizon. Appreciate you coming, Ronnie. I really enjoyed that performance this morning, Mayor, I mean, really, I did. Did you notice how empty, outside of Amanda sitting there, how empty that first three rows got and how the whole place just kind of went quiet? Let's have them up here every week. I think maybe I'd enjoy that. I would enjoy it. I'm going to jump off on some pre-material. I'm not going to take up Sunday liquor sales right now, I'll do that later date. But I do agree that people ought to vote on it if they want to, and then we'll both vote the way we want to, and that'll cover that. Clayton Cemetery, I want to appeal to anybody who has a relative buried at Clayton Cemetery in Alabama City to come out on Decoration Day, May the 12th, and get us lined up because the Alabama City Historical Association and the Northeast Alabama Genealogical Association are going to team up and try our best to get perpetual care for that cemetery. So it's a little bit early to be talking about it, but Billy, you know as well as I do, like Sixth Street, you can't start too early. And we need the people to come out and, especially on that Saturday before, that's when people will be decorating and give us all the chance, we'll all be there, and give us a chance to talk to everybody. So have.
If there's not anything else, I'll entertain a motion we adjourn.